For July seventeenth, would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for joining us this morning. The first item on the agenda is citizen input. That would be for anybody that wants to speak on anything that's not on the agenda. If you do want to speak, there's some blue forms over here. Fill out and give them to Sharon. If you're ready to speak, we can fill them out later, but it doesn't look like anybody wants to speak on anything on the agenda. So we'll move on to consent agenda.
Yeah, I'll just add that our meeting this morning, we were just having a little conversation right before we got started. So we attended Pacific Power and Energy Trust discussion, kind of the outreach from the leadership of Pacific Power, talking about the energy needs and generation in solar and wind. And as an advocate for, remember biomass could be out there possibly and how they're kind of shutting down coal into different aspects of the energy market. So that was our meeting that we went to this morning.
And then actually, businesses can apply for grants for electric vehicle charging stations. So I thought that was an excellent idea to know that they just had a grant to put them in at High Desert Museum. They have them in Madras. I can't remember exactly where, but you know.
The Chamber office of Madras.
So we do need probably some more of those grants to be applied for.
I think the gate closed at the High Desert Museum in the evening. So I wonder if somebody's going to look for a charging station, find that on a map and sit there at midnight thinking, oh, I just need a little charge. So that'll be interesting.
Last night at the presentation, they talked a little more about it. And so I asked, well, how many electric cars are there currently? And he used the number three to five percent currently. That's not accurate for what PPNOS serves. What he said last night was about 3,000 vehicles in a service district of 5,000, 500,000 residences. So it's really a minor thing. So.
Commissioner Brown is getting their electric cars.
Well, we sold a couple of hybrids, you know, during our auction. We had some that we. But so that was interesting. The other thing that was interesting is hearing the role of the utility with regard to, you know, conservation on one side and then new productions. It was interesting. They verified what we'd been told by the PUC about actually California giving free solar to Oregon, or them actually paying what he said last night, I think, when they have too much production in California. And so that was interesting that they confirmed that. What we'd heard from the PUC directors.
In the BPA Columbia system, my understanding, commercial rates can go negative sometimes for large users. And that's why Kaiser Aluminum had the opportunity, or you know, just the big industry users in the Northwest over the years. Because there's so much power that's always rolling when the river's on. So just.
Another thing that they talked about last night, because the Crook County people were there in Redmond, they talked about how they got the additional capacity in central Oregon back about 10 years ago for about, I think it was 800 megawatts of power to allow these, all the, the big Facebook and Apple facilities. And that they're getting close to that capacity now. And they thought it would last till, or the BPA thought it would last till 2050. And it's like, no, we're almost there. So they're going to have to look at expanding our whole region for power is interesting. So, good. All right. Well, our first item is the consent agenda. Do either of you have any changes or questions or comments on that?
I move we confirm the consent agenda for today, July seventeenth, two thousand and nine.
I'll second it.
Okay. And Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Devon? And Chair votes yes. Thank you.
A big set of minutes on that.
Yep. And yes, as we all noted, a big set of minutes gone through. So our first action item is the consideration of board signature on document number 2019-532, special transportation grant funding. I think Eric, you're going to present this to us.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioners. Eric Crop, Deputy County Administrator. Joining me this morning are two folks from COIC. Derek Hoffbauer is the Outreach and Engagement Specialist and Drew Orr is the Transportation Fiscal Administrator. I'm going to kind of give a overview of this agreement and then Derek and Drew can chime in or answer questions. Just as background, this is an agreement with COIC to provide for East Cascade, Cascade East Transit to provide dial rides services and vehicle replacement. These are existing services. This actually is a project out of the Special Transportation Fund. We've talked most recently a lot about the STIF program, which is the statewide transportation improvement fund. STIF is the payroll dollars that go to expand services. And that's not what we're talking about this morning. We're talking about the STF, which is Special Transportation Fund. You'll recall that the county has a Special Transportation Advisory Committee. That committee reviewed a number of grant applications and came up with a recommendation of funding for the STF funds. And your packet on page 90 is a table that lists the recommendations. These recommendations came to the board and were approved on March thirteenth, 2019. These amounts are, these projects were then forwarded to ODOT for approval. And really what we're talking about this morning, if you look on page 90, is at the third table, it's labeled Special Transportation Fund Formula Grant Program. The first line item on that is Cascade East Transit Dial Ride Services and Vehicle Replacement in the amount of $765,772. So that was recommended by the advisory committee, approved by the Board of Commissioners. And then at the June twenty-sixth board meeting, the board approved an agreement with ODOT. It's agreement number 2019-520, which is also in your packet. And that agreement with ODOT was to receive those grant funds. So now, kind of as the last step of the process, before you this morning is an agreement with COIC to provide those services. And we will be executing individual agreements for all those who have been awarded these grant dollars. That concludes the staff report.
And we saw another memo recently, I was able to read it, talking about the near future is combining special transportation and then Special Transportation Investment Fund. And that was state legislative guidance. Is that correct? But that's the next step.
Yeah, and we'll cover that after this item, just as kind of a summary of what happened at the end of the legislature and steps moving forward where ODOT or the state legislature, legislature asked ODOT to combine those two programs.
My question is, so you recalled that we had approved this, you said, in May. Did we approve the request column or the recommendation column in May?
The board approved the recommendation column and there were, there were no changes in the recommendations. The board didn't make any changes for this grant program.
We reduced the fleet maintenance and vehicle replacement, I assume because the money is now flowing in from the STIF funding or the.
You mean when you compare the request column to the, I think part of it was the request column is higher than the amount of allocated funds. And so the advisory committee went through and, and reduced some of the requests.
I assume what makes them able to do that is because they've got all this other funding flowing into COIC from the, you know, the seven million of, for new, you know, vehicles. And I mean, they got all sorts of money flowing in. Isn't that the gist of it?
Yeah, I was at that meeting, the STF meeting, taking minutes for, and they decided that they wanted to fund Opportunity Foundation in the full amount, you know, knowing that COIC was poised to get funds through STIF that would help, you know, generate some revenue.
So all we're asked, being asked to do today is approve the agreement?
Yeah, the agreement is with COIC. And if you turn to page ninety-nine of your packet, which is the, which is Exhibit One to the agreement, it talks about the work that COIC will do. And it says contractor shall perform the following work, provide dial ride, complimentary pair transit and community connector services operated by Cascade East Transit in and between the cities of Bend, Lepine, Redmond and Sisters. These services connect seniors, persons with disabilities and the general public to medical appointments, senior meal centers, places of employment, job training, educational opportunities, recreational, social and shopping activities and family and friends. So these are the services that will be provided for the dollars through the grant program.
Is there a separate, for the hundred thousand to the opportunity, a separate agreement there?
Yeah, there's a separate, there's, no, it's not in this packet. There's a separate agreement and that will be approved administratively since it's a hundred thousand dollars, which is within the county administrator's signature authority.
What does, what does that fund then? Because we're the vendors or the authorizers of this STF funding.
Yeah, it says client transit services. I have the agreement actually on my desk. If the board would like a copy, I'd be happy to provide.
Well, I mean, is it, do they have their own separate buses or vans? Is that what it's, you think it's funding or? I thought, I mean, I've seen them, but I wondered if that.
Yeah, I think.
They were owned separately.
Yep, and their own operator. So I've experienced the transport getting on in Lepine, getting off at Hawthorne Station, and then Opportunity Foundation with their next vehicle picks them up and brings them to their facility, you know, from Southern to Shute County. So I've seen that in operation.
They offer more kind of specialized services for, mostly with people with disabilities. Whereas, you know, the funds that CET receives through STF, I mean, they're seniors, also people already disabled, but they also benefit the general public as well. These are supporting our rural dial ride systems in Lepine and Sisters and Redmond, as well as our community connector services.
Yeah, good. Any questions? Commissioner Dare?
Can we ask anything about the Lepine area services today?
Sure.
I did get a late email last night about the services, if there is a possibility to implement the services from Lepine to Sun River this summer for people that are working. And do you have any background on that?
So are we talking about through the funds that were potentially allocated through STIF?
Yes.
Right, but they're trying to do something now.
Trying to do something now. Yeah, and I thought we had had that conversation a couple of months ago.
We did, and I just got an email last night.
Okay.
From Ms. Baney regarding it.
Oh, okay.
Something about, I haven't read it, I just read it off on my phone.
Okay, yeah.
But it was something in regards of, like, it was a $1,200 a day cost for that service to provide that bus route.
Yeah, so what we did is you would ask the question, or the Commissioners would ask the question of what would it take to implement that service? And so we did.
People that work would love to have that.
Some scoping of it and came up with some costs that seemed, you know, it was, it would be difficult to do this summer.
We get 12 riders, a hundred bucks each, each day, and we're there.
Well, I thought it might be important to call.
But it's good to know the cost, the cost of operation.
You know, because I know they were really asking for it and see what his feedback would be on it.
We can follow up with them and kind of give them some of the details of what it, what it takes to run the service. I mean, I think it's challenging now without knowing what funds are coming in and what's been approved by ODOT to take that leap and, you know, and fund this, especially when some of those projects were actually in the 130% list to support that. But we can follow up. I'll follow up with Tammy when she's back from the OTC. And we can circle back to you and, and figure out if something will happen this summer and if not, when it will be put in place.
Seventeenth of July, so.
So just so you're clear, you know, Commissioner Baney's been the one bringing this up repeatedly at meetings. But I think both Commissioners, well, you can speak for yourself, I'm equally, I mean, excuse me. Commissioner Dare has been, you know, supporting this from the start, but I equally support it. I don't want you to get the idea that this is her project. This, and I have the same questions of why this can't get done. Every time I drive by your parking facility over there and see 20 buses sitting there every day during the middle of the day. I just, so it's, you know, $1,200, you just, you know, I don't know your budgets. I'm not on COIC. But I, I just, I see this, you know, we, we changed the tenor of it from you were going to buy a bus sometime this year and start a system next year to, oh, well, really you could buy a bus sooner. It could be a used bus. There's all these. So we changed the trajectory of this whole discussion through our, our discussions about the stiff, the big huge budget that we had a couple, a couple of weeks to work on. So if you have other funds, it's not just Commissioner Dare asking for this. It's, I agree with it.
Oh, well, I'm absolutely supportive.
So I don't want you to think this is, well, I know, but.
And we need a 12-hour bus.
If we just want to be redundant, yeah, we're just, we all, I think we all are supportive of this. So it's not, and we see this as something that people have asked us in the South County. And I live in Bend and I watch lots of empty buses go around. And I wonder how much a day those cost for those services and whether those make sense. So when we're asking for this, I think, I just want to put a little more force behind it than just you.
I speak too softly.
No, you don't, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying you speak with their support throughout. And so I didn't know about the communication last night, but.
I just read it like at nine o'clock last night or something, so.
But so I, you know, I mentioned 12 people and a hundred dollars a day, but I mean, there may be true employment people that get in the, in the, in the cycle, use it every day, five days a week at least. days a week at least, and there may be a very valuable economic loop there.
Maybe there's 50 people, and that's more than are using buses.
Well, actually, it's like, it's a, you know, the tourist season is seven days a week. So I would think that people would...
For each person, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, I would think that it could be like a seven-day-a-week good program.
I would say, I'm excited to see how well that route would be utilized and, yeah.
Yes.
And we need to run it to see.
And they actually were talking about where the bus could pull in and everything. I was at a chamber meeting for Sun River the other day, and so there's all those further decisions that, you know, people in the know need to make. But they were, they were talking about it too and how critical they felt it was for that community.
And we are reconvening, we have a local technical advisory committee in Lapine through our Transit Master Plan, and we're getting all the regional tax members together in October, and then we're doing another series of meetings in Lapine in early 2020 to kind of talk about service implementation and planning. And so these are kind of the community partners and the stakeholders that are involved in, you know, helping move this forward and, and getting more specific about what the route would look like. So there's, there's a little bit of planning work that needs...
I appreciate all that, you know, but when I was young, we picked strawberries. And these farmers in Hood River would pick up 4th, 5th, 6th, and 7th graders and haul them out to strawberry fields in the, at four in the morning or five in the morning. Somehow they didn't need to study every aspect. Now, I guess I'm looking at, how do you get that model working sometimes in, in your program where you already know there's people that are, need to travel from Lapine to there? The people that run the resorts tell you that. So I guess they could send out a bus to pick up people, but it seems like this is a, so all of this planning, other people in the private sector would start something and say, "This is where we're going to pick you up." But I've seen it, well, I've seen it in agriculture actually my whole life when I was younger, so, I don't know. That's what I'm, I'm encouraging what we're saying.
And then, don't forget, I know it was the last plan on our system number 46 or 42, but Crooked River, there are 6,000 people that live in Crooked River. And who knows if that's going to actually be funded, but if it is funded, I would love to see that working into Redmond, what, you know, where the need is asked for. A lot of people live there, actually as many live in Crooked River as in Madras. So I don't, I don't want them to be forgotten. And I know you guys are in the business. I know they try to run a bus service and, you know, within themselves, they can't do it, but you, that's your business. So, anyway, thank you.
We will explore all of this opportunity, same thing.
Yeah, it's a great opportunity.
With that, I'll move Board Signature of Document Number 2019-532, Special Transportation Grant Funding.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Mr. DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Chair, yes.
And one more item, so Mr. Orr, are you the one I communicated with about the radio system? That's what I figured, okay, good. So, and that's not a business item for today, but let's just make sure that, maybe a status, does it sound like there's an opportunity to use that system? So this is, our 911 radio system, our district, may have capacity for other channels for public service instead of public safety, and this, we're just looking at the opportunity.
Within the bus system?
Yeah, yeah.
We were in the midst of starting a procurement for our radio system.
Oh.
And Mr. DeBonne was kind enough to alert us to the opportunity to work with the Shute's 911. And we are starting the procurement process. I have altered the specifications to allow for a system that would be compliant with the, the 911 system. And I'm going to be encouraging all the vendors to provide us a variety of proposals, including ones that would be compliant.
So that's the status, the RFP basically is changed around.
Yes.
Allow the bigger...
It's meant to be inclusive so that we can, we can get a variety of proposals.
Okay. Mr. Tre.
Can I, I just have one more other question for Derek.
Yes.
Derek, on the memo on the state, the STF funding is going to go down 10.1 million. Do we know how that's going to affect Shute County yet?
We do not at this time. The OTC meets tomorrow, and, you know, we're hopeful that we'll get a little more direction from ODOT about, I mean, you know, it's 10 million across the state out of a pretty...
Right, because 5 million going to come to, you know, off of the...
Bucket, so I wouldn't see it dramatically affecting, but some of those 130% list projects will, you know, the potential for them to be funded would be less so, given this transfer of money between the STIF and the STF program. More, more to come on that, we'll have more direction.
Okay, tomorrow then, we'll know after tomorrow.
That was the other memo I referenced earlier, yeah.
It was, about the integration, the potential future integration of STF and STIF. And, you know, we're happy to have those conversations with you about what that means for the advisory committees here. Maybe once, you know, Judith's replacement comes on board, we can work with Eric and, and figure out an approach to, you know, potentially look at an integration of those committees or whatever makes more sense to have a more efficient process here between our organizations.
Are there, is there any cross pollinating or meeting between those committees now or...
They're, so, so COIC administers Crook and Jefferson Counties, both are STF and they're STIF. And so what we've done this year is we've held back-to-back meetings so the members can get familiar with each of the other programs, because they're, you know, a lot of the same kind of committee member functions. You remember when we did the recruitment, we needed to have someone who was, you know, a person with a disability and a senior who needed to be represented. So the criteria is very similar, they would be, you know, it wouldn't be difficult to kind of merge them into one committee, and it looks like that's kind of what ODOT's goal is. And so I think we just need to, to meet and talk about what that looks like and develop some next steps and think about, you know, a, a recruitment process that would allow kind of both of these committees to have full representation and participation in the process.
Did you have another matter?
Uh, no, I was just going to bring up that memo, but I think we got it covered.
Thank you.
So, yeah, as I said, I jumped track about the radio system, I just didn't want to miss that, and then it looked like Tom might have had some information of it.
Yeah, Commissioner, just FYI, I had an opportunity to debrief with Sarah Kloswite, our 911 director yesterday. And that sounds like much of this happened last week when I was out of the office, but just what we're talking about is really use of the, the infrastructure, wouldn't have an effect on operations, there's no dispatching going on, so it's creation of a channel, use of the infrastructure. And since COIC buses travel outside of the 911 service district area, the state would be involved also in utilizing the statewide network for the Crook and Jefferson routes that COIC buses would travel. More to come, yeah, much more discussion, but in terms of, you know, impact on 911, it really wouldn't have a tremendous impact, certainly not on operations and, and not a lot in terms of the technical side of things.
And as I say, I was just an advocate to say, hey, if there's capacity for more channels, and I, I agree, it's not the 911 operations, but it's the backbone and infrastructure. Let's make sure we have that conversation, instead of trying to put another antenna on the same, you know, tower somewhere and then worrying about the more access.
No, I appreciate you having brought it up, and Sarah was very kind with her time. We spoke twice on the phone.
Good, we'll see if it worked out.
Good, okay, well, thank you for joining us, yeah.
Thank you for your support.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the consideration, continued deliberation, I guess, of...
Commissioners, I'm not sure if you voted on that last item, I know there was a motion and a second.
Oh, yeah, maybe not.
Yeah, I think we voted.
Okay.
Yeah, because I remember the chair, I remember I voted.
Yeah.
I don't vote till the other two, so it was all...
But then we, yeah.
Three to zero.
Oh, you're right, now I remember it.
This is continued deliberation on marijuana production processing at 25450 Walker Road. Jacob will start us off.
Good morning, my name's Jacob Ripper, I'm the Senior Planner for our Planning Division here, for the record. Today, the Board is holding continued deliberations following a reopen record period for this application. Staff prepared a decision matrix that's been updated to reflect the two previously unresolved deliberation topics. Those are credibility of the applicant or his associates and noise mitigation for mechanical equipment. The staff memo that's attached also lists some of the topics from the original decision matrix and the Board's previous determinations. Of course, the Board hasn't voted on this application yet, so, and the deliberations are ongoing, so any topic can be revisited if needed. And then just as a reminder for us here, and if anyone's watching online, I just wanted to touch on some of the topics in the staff memo really quick to, it's been a while since our last deliberation, so just as a reminder. So there were two previous deliberations, between those deliberations, we received a request to reopen the record, that was granted, the applicant requested that, to address a credibility argument that was raised by the appellant. So in the open record period, the applicant actually didn't submit very much information, they only made a submission during the rebuttal period, the second period. It was a letter basically explaining that they didn't expect their business partners to be caught up in, in the situations that they are now and that they, they are alarmed about the situation as well. And then in the reopen record period, the appellant submitted some additional information in addition to reiterating their previous arguments that they had made, focusing on two topics mostly. Again, the credibility of the applicant, applicant team, but including new arrest information for Jacob Onat, one of the business partners of the applicant. And then some information about hazards in regards to different types of butanes that are used for marijuana processing. And then as a quick review of the previous topics that were deliberated, those included a youth activity center, the 25% processing requirement, a utility verification letter, order control mitigation, site plan review, approval criteria. And the Board previously found that all of those approval criteria were met. And then additionally, a topic of proficiency and capability of the alfalfa fire department. And the Board discussed that the requirement is for the facility to be located in a fire district, and that eventually that the capability of the fire district wasn't an approval criterion. So I can answer any questions at this time before we go to the decision matrix, but I also wanted to make it clear that, and the staff wanted to clarify, that in consideration of the additional information that was submitted during the reopen record period, if the Board wants to redeliberate any of those previous topics that's available, or the Board could confirm that those previous deliberations stand and we can move forward just to the two remaining topics.
So the memo says topics that may or may not address approval criteria, referring to credibility and the fire department. I mean, is that, that's the clarity on this, so that, and that's up to the Board also to...
Correct, yeah.
Find how we review, we view those.
Correct, and that was a, a subject title from the previous decision matrix, it was under that category.
Yep, okay.
Commissioner Dare, thoughts or...
Well, when I was reviewing this, I actually noticed that Jacob Onat, his home, his address listed is Redmond, Washington. And so I thought, so I actually, you know, Googled it, and yes, it is Redmond, I mean, that street is in Redmond, Washington, not Oregon. So I was a bit surprised about that because the property owners themselves live in Southern California. So, and then, then you included the last, the latest arrest for a party involved in this was Jacob Onat?
Yes.
And all that documentation is included? And from his testimony, he was clearly stating that he was going to be a business partner, even though his name is not on the application?
Yeah, correct, yeah. For the first topic, this credibility topic in the staff comments section, I made, I made a note that Mark Wisight is the lone applicant listed on the land use application, but Jacob Onat requested to be a party to the application, and testimony from the public hearing made it clear that they were business partners.
Right. And apparently the, is it Sam Onat? Also, his charges are still in limbo with our DA. I mean, that cannot go into our record now, if, if anything did change.
Correct, so the applicant in the reopen record period submitted some information from the DA's office about an arrangement for Sam Onat, but any outcomes of that process were after the open record period closed, so we don't have that information available to us.
Okay.
So I guess my take on this, and I appreciate all the new information that the appellants have provided, you know, we had, we had decided two months ago that we would extend this timeline so that the applicant had hoped that he would be, we had questions about Sam Onat, who was the father of Jacob Onat, who was more tangentially involved in co-businesses, but he'd been arrested in a big bust in Lapine, and we, they'd said, well, maybe they'll have that clarified, and so we'd said, okay, we'll give that. Because it's, you know, it's true that people are presumed innocent till they're proven guilty, but these were pretty serious charges, and it was clear that, that it was involved, et cetera. So we had this open period, and then during the period, really, things got worse for the applicant, which is his partner, but what concerns me more is Jacob Onat was the one that represented to us that he was going to be in charge of the processing. He held himself out as the expert on the processing, he held himself out on the entane and the, you know, how they were going to do it. Now he's been arrested, and, and I don't know if it's related to the same thing, but now we've got two people that had been involved in the original application. So I don't see how we can go forward with a application by someone who was depending on people that are now under arrest or being investigated. I mean, we had, I was fine to do the waiting that was originally asked for, but, you know, we're evaluating an application from last year. So I had, I raised the issue not just of credibility, but of health and safety on this particular one, as a more generic concern that with regard to safety, you know, we hear forever from different growers or people that are in the industry saying that they want to be the, you know, the example of a great business person, a great citizen, et cetera. And it may turn out that these people are all found not guilty, and it was all a big whatever, but it doesn't look that way at this point. So I'm not inclined to approve this particular application because of those partnerships. I'm a little bit also troubled in, in Mr., in the Wisights' explanation of this is a sordid affair. This is really more, I mean, these people aren't being charged with a sordid affair, they're being charged with criminal violations, which is a different thing to me. So that's kind of the public safety part of it, that I don't feel it's our, our objective or our responsibility to make every application work however we can, it's to make sure we have good, we've proved good applications with people we can rely on. The second part, though, of the safety now to me has become this discussion of the entane and butane, which originally they, they had put in, I think in their application, that they were going to be processing it through, extracting it through water means, which seems rather safe. But butane is, is what's notorious now throughout the country of explosions, we've had them in Bend, we've had them elsewhere. And so it, I am worried about the safety aspect of that in a rural area with people that, you know, that may or may not be experts at it or whatever. So I, I have that problem, that's kind of a new problem now that we've had a lot more information on the, it doesn't seem like the entane is that much different than the butane. I, I didn't see, and maybe you could characterize the evidence, but the, what was presented, it didn't seem like they were a different class of safety, just seems like a different chemical formulae. So I, I have a safety concern, and this doesn't really have to do with this particular app only, it's with regard to butane processing in rural fire-risk areas. So I, I would prefer the processing to be very safe or, and maybe in urban areas if we were going to be, where it's easier to, to monitor. So I had both of those problems, and I think they're, I feel them stronger than I did three, two months ago when I was concerned with this. So I'm, I'm going to vote no on this for those two reasons. The other part is that it's characterized as credibility. I don't see, I mean, credibility might be a factor that, well, they said they were clean in... a factor that, well, they said they were clean and cut and turns out he's, you know, he's not, so, you know, maybe we couldn't believe that he's really going to do his butane the right way, or he's not, he's going to maybe not, you know, he has to that 25% rule that he has to, you know, provide from that processing, to that processing, from that land. That could maybe be verified or whatever. I'm, this is not the same level to me of credibility that I saw with regard to the alfalfa market road one, where the limits have been stretched and we were relying on completion. I'm, I'm more, this is a more base level to me than the, than even getting to credibility. I mean, I may, we'll include it, but I, I just, credibility, this is really the, the health and safety concerns, which I don't, I think we've only used, brought that up in one other, that's my view on this.
So in this situation, I do support the fact that there's, and it's hard to define, you know, the credibility of an applicant, and I'm not, and I do support innocent until proven guilty, but it is the compatibility slash credibility situation out, you know, in this location, because how could we, for land use purposes, approve something with this layer on top of it? So I go kind of down the same path that you're, that you're saying in this. It just wouldn't be right to start off in that situation, you know, get these issues cleared up, start again, or whatever needs to happen. So, and I don't know exactly what that looks like in the words, but there's going to be support for this point.
Yeah, and I, I think those are good distinctions to make, because the credibility aspect is tied to that Lubbock case, Lee versus Marion County, that talks about essentially believability of testimony in a public hearing, right, versus the more general public health and safety concerns.
So a few more words down those lines then. So, you know, we do have previous deliberations, and there's a lot of items that, that would, you know, be supported here, so, and we're just, we're ending up with these loose ends, and I, we did open up the record period, and it was mentioned that the situation basically got worse for the partnership. As I say, I, it'll be interesting how we can word this, because, you know, this is it, but we're doing this in a very public setting, so people get the feel for what we're saying also. So really, I'm just supporting that one specific item about credibility.
Yeah.
I mean, the applicants, in their letters, say that they feel like they're in the perfect storm, and definitely, it's been a perfect storm, so.
So where are you on this application?
No, I, I, I couldn't approve it. Does that mean no? I would not approve it today.
Well, and as I said, I'm just referring, it was the one item that, you know, we're all agreeing on, there may be others that want to be written up here too, so.
Yeah, the, the one that was left kind of open to me was about the noise, there wasn't any more evidence, I don't believe in the record about whether 16 units out there would exceed the decibel. I saw that as a possible proof thing, but I don't think we got any more, but we don't have to get to that on this particular one, I guess, if, this time.
I would suggest a formal vote to either approve or deny the application, staff will prepare the appropriate findings.
So, can I get a motion? Let's see, it'd be on this order. Let's see, what do we want to call it here? Is there a resolution in here?
No, there's an applicant, you could just reference file number 247-19-000178-A, and then the motion will be to either deny the, approve the application or deny it. So being that case number, I'll move denial of the marijuana production processing at 25450 Walker Road.
And I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion?
No.
Thanks for making all the additional information, making it available to us well ahead of time so we could review it.
It was an excellent presentation. Thank you very much for what you did.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
So Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And the chair of the chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I think we have, so that I think concludes our action items today. Lunch recess, it's only 20 to 11. There's a couple other items, do you want, do we have other things besides executive sessions this afternoon, or? Do you want, I've got a 1:00 appointment, could we do executive this at now, or? I don't remember how many we have.
We could recess upstairs.
We could recess upstairs.
Okay.
Yes, I was glad to see Adam was here.
There's a couple other update items we could do here, it's not, if you want to do it, or do you want to move upstairs?
Let's reorganize upstairs, so executive sessions and other items, which will be documented in our minutes.
Okay, so, we'll adjourn for today, for today, thank you.
Continue.
For recess.
Recess until.
Upstairs in the Allen Conference.
Yeah, at, at 11:00.
11:00.
Thank you.